Councilmember Singleton?
Here.
Kane?
Harrison.
Campion?
Here.
Howard?
Here.
Okay, we'll have a flag salute and a little silent prayer, please. Liz, since you just got back, we'll have you lead the march.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, could you please read the video statement? This meeting of the council is being videotaped in its entirety and will be cable cast without interruption on Metro Cable 14, the Government Affairs Channel, on the Comcast and Shore West Cable Systems. Tonight's meeting can be seen on Channel 14 and will also be webcast at www.saxmetrocable.tv this Friday and Saturday mornings at 9:00 a.m. Tonight's meeting can also be seen via live video streaming on the city's website at www.cii.galt.ca.us. A DVD copy is also available for checkout from any library branch. Members of the audience wishing to address council should fill out a speaker identification form and give it to the clerk. Please speak into the microphone when addressing council and state your name for the record. Okay, thank you. Council, are there any agenda approval additions and/or deletions? Okay, so then we'll move on along to presentations.
Madam Mayor, if I might, we've got an item on the agenda that is date sensitive and you'll have an item to talk about August 5th. And in the event that we're going to cancel or reschedule the August 5th meeting, then our item on the Landscape and Lighting District hearing will need to be revised date to go along with that.
Correct.
We may need to pull that off of consent if that happens.
Which one?
The number four.
Item four.
Okay, so we'll keep an eye on that. If we just change the date at the council, are you just going to change the date?
We would just revise our presentation and hearing dates.
Okay, alright. So we're going to have presentations now of the Galt Community Garden at Harvey Park.
Everyone in the city council, thanks everyone for coming. I see some familiar faces out there. So today I'm here to present the Galt Community Garden. It's right near Harvey Park, park right there near Valley Oaks Elementary, on Third and D Street. It's actually a park that I used to play ball at, that baseball park, all growing up. And I always noticed that abandoned lot on Third and D Street. And so that is what I'm going to be talking today about.
Can you do me a favor, please, to tell us who you are for the record?
Of course. My name's Russell Flutie, I've been living in Galt my whole life. I have a lot of brothers and I've always felt like I'm part of something bigger. And so this Galt Community Garden is an extension of that. Because I feel like this is something bigger that we can all be a part of. And it's like a big family. And that's something that I've always sought through my life, being a teacher or tutor or whatever. I just love being part of something bigger and helping people out. And this is what has come through fruition of doing that. So the vision of the Galt Community Garden is pretty simple. We're just going to create a place for people to garden for free, out right there on that property, which has really nice Valley Oaks, as you can see. And you can also see the nice new buildings that we have in Galt. So it's actually a really nice landscape to take a look at. Also, I want to empower the youth to volunteer and get involved in the community. We'll talk more about that, but since I do substitute teach in Galt School District, I have a lot of connections with the teachers that are doing gardening programs. So that is going to feed into that youth volunteer. And the last thing is to promote healthy eating habits and physical fitness. Over the last two years, I lost about eighty pounds through running and eating well. And so this is all part of not only me changing as a person, but also trying to change the things that I see in my city that I feel like could help everyone. Not only the youth, but also the senior community who has also shown a really outpouring of support for this project. And so I want to start by talking about why I decided to become a part of this. And during the time, I'm going to show you some garden design inspiration that is around, comes from around our town. The first one is the Eagle Garden, which is at Estralita High School, which is the continuation high school. And the second one is the Galt Family Life Christian Garden, which is on Fifth and D Street. And that's run by the local church. So these pictures are just pictures of the garden from Eagle Garden. I substitute taught there one day and these students from Estralita often are difficult to manage sometimes and difficult to motivate. And so as I'm substituting all day and I'm dealing with different kids, different issues, I go and I take my break and I see Brendan Moore, who's a teacher at Estralita High. And he's empowering these kids through letting them go outside and take these tools and make something tangible that they can see, that they can really learn something. They can actually apply their knowledge. And Brendan lets them do pretty much whatever they want. He's a really easygoing guy. And so he is one, to see the way that he empowers those kids affected me so greatly that I wanted to take up this project. He had mentioned that councilmember Barbara Kane had came and asked him to do it and he just didn't really have the time. And seeing me as a young guy with a lot of enthusiasm, he decided to offer the project to me. And I took it willingly because I saw all the potential. And not only that, but I just, the way that it affected the kids was just something that really touched me at a personal level. And so not only are they building things and they're planning, learning about nature, but they're also creating art. Because not everyone is really into eating healthy food. Some people like to eat junk food and that's their problem. But, but the art part of it was also something really cool because I'm a musician and I love art. So that's something that struck home for me. Now this is some of the garden from Fifth and B. This is some of the inspiration of what our garden's going to look like with this similar type of fence and similar garden beds, although we're considering doing raised beds. And I'll get more into that afterwards. This is kind of just a fluffy airy picture thing to show you that we do have gardens in Galt. You just have to go and find them. And so the design currently that we have was created by Janine Sinclair. And the property that we're working with is about a third of an acre. We have two Valley Oaks on there, which are protected by the Conservation Act. And so we've already looked into some of the options on how we are going to deal with that. I'm just going to give a really quick synopsis of exactly what you're looking at here. So on the very top, we have thirteen family raised garden beds that are going to measure eight by twenty and there's twenty-three smaller beds, four by eight. So we have family gardening style and personal gardening for whatever mixed use people want. We will arrange them however you want, whatever. We just want to get people out there and gardening. We also have pathways that are built in and as well as we're trying to, we're planning on putting a tool shed. We already have a concrete slab out there, so we want to put a tool shed out there for tools, also for storage. As I mentioned, there needs to be fencing around it to protect it for security reasons, just like the garden at Fifth and B. And so we will be building a fence on the west, north, and east side. The south side is actually already, there's already a house there. So we plan to plant some trees for coverage and for security on that certain side. As well as we're going to be putting in gates for access on the west and north side and then on, actually on the north and east side. And on the west side, we're going to have bigger gates so we can get bigger materials and things like that in there. We're also considering putting in a frugula near the big Valley Oak tree. The frugula will provide structure and will provide like an area that we can gather so one day we can have maybe an expert gardener come in and give some type of presentation on how to improve your gardening. Or maybe when we have a farmer's market, we can have some type of music or art, whatever. The sky's the limit, really. And so we also have a water design plan that was, Janine Sinclair did the landscape design. The water design plan was developed by an expert that I know and then we gave it to the Public Works and they did a little work on it, I believe. And the basic design for that is for, we wanted to optimize the water conservation so we have it on a circuit system. That way the water can be used at multiple locations without worrying about not having pressure. As well as we designed it specifically so that there's bibs at every single individual gardening plot. So that way no one has their hose running over anything like that. We are in the process of talking and coordinating with Public Works to get our initial water source inputted and some hose bibs so that we can have some water out there. That brings me to some of the people that help support what we're already doing. One of the young men who I'll talk a little bit later, but I just want to point him out, Mr. Chris Flores over there. He's training to become an Eagle Scout and one of the things that he wants to do is help us with our garden project. So I really appreciate him being here today. Some of the people that I've already touched and talked to about the Galt Community Garden, I went and presented at Galt Place. There's about ten plus seniors there that listened and were very interested. Also Golden Living Centers, I networked with the manager there. She's very interested. She wants to also have me present there and she thinks that it will be really good for their seniors there as well because of the location. Also, I canvassed a lot of businesses right around there. And all the businesses that let me put up flyers and listen to me, I also have included Rooster's Velvet Grill, this and that antique, Capades Market, A-Side Response Cookies, Savemark, Golf Guns Supply. They're all right there in the wheelhouse of where this garden's going to be built. So I figured I might as well walk around and talk to them. And also some of the people that have supported it really big in the city have, of course, been Barbara Kane, who has been working with me closely to develop all this information and move along the project. Also Brendan Moore's on the Galt Parks and Rec Commission, so he has already talked to the Galt Parks and Rec Commission and recommended this project. Galt Public Works, as I mentioned, has already worked on the water design to help us out a little bit. And the Galt Beautification Committee supports us because they love beauty. They've already been working on Harvey Park. Things are moving up in that location of town. And of course, Janine Sinclair is on the Beautification Committee and she's the one who does the design work, so she's behind it. I've also held three community forums on the site that have drawn about twenty-plus volunteers, some of them that are here today. And I have their contact information, waiting to just contact them when we need the help or when the garden's actually finished. Trying to create enough demand for the garden so that there's so many people that want to garden, we're going to create some actual motivated gardeners. Because you know, it gets hard out there and it's hot. So we want people out there that are really going to want to garden and make something beautiful. And so our first step, which is what I was talking about before, because we want to, the current water system design requires two initial taps on the north side of the property. Some of the project may change a little bit depending on Chris's expertise and what Public Works recommends. But he has already decided that he wants to provide the materials and manpower and volunteer time. So I applaud that.
Yeah.
And he consulted with Jason, I believe, and also the Public Works employee Bill Forrest. So he has some people here helping him out. So it's not just him going out there by himself, which is what I thought at first. But no, 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 Chris has got everyone behind him. He's a really smart guy. I'm glad that he came out to my last community forum and I got to meet him and walk around the property. And so right now for our current funding, there's a few things that we've been looking at. One is the House Related Parks Program, which is a grant that can be applied for. I'm not fully certain whether Galt has applied for it and accepted it or not. But a portion of that grant money could be potentially used for the community garden. It's one of the guidelines in the grant. Also Home Depot provides community impact grants, up to five thousand dollars. That's for materials and things like that. I'm in the process of applying for that grant. And Barbara Kane has also fledged fifteen hundred dollars to the actual project. When it comes to budget, I'm defaulting to Barbara on that. We are currently trying to come up with a working materials list and money because obviously it doesn't get anywhere if we don't know how much is needed. So that's something that is of further research. But I'm certain that we'll get many donations and a lot of support when it all starts rolling. And so the last thing, some of the last things, how can people in the audience help? Or you guys help? Tell your friends, attend a community forum, volunteer on a project, donate materials, or plant your own garden. It doesn't, for me, it doesn't really matter. As long as you're doing something and you're out in nature and you're planning something and you're learning about what it is to be outside of these four walls, that's the most important thing for me. Because I feel like that builds so much character in a lot of different ways that you cannot get inside. The classroom or different things like that, which is the reason why I feel like it's tremendously needed. I just want to take a moment to thank everyone that's helped me. Barbara Kane, Brendan Moore, Janine Sinclair, Don, Dave Sutter, Debbie Sutter, Barbara Edge, Angel Velasquez, and all my family and students and my community. When I went and talked to some of the students from Estralita, they came to Brandon with this project because they felt like as members of the community that live in that specific park, that there could be a more positive impact and influence there. So it's not only me that has really picked up this idea. It really has come organically out of the community as a need, not only for the senior community, but for the younger community too. And so the take homes that I think are the biggest and most poignant things about the garden is we're going to create a sense of community. Because if we build it, the people will come, I guarantee it. There's a lot, lot, a lot of people that are very interested in this garden. And I've talked and walked around and talked to a lot of people. So building that community garden will be like a symbol of hope. It'll take all those communities and unite them. Not only that, all the ideas in terms of the neighborhood barbecue that we could have there or the expert gardening seminars, I mean, it goes on. The community garden can increase the ownership and stewardship of that specific area. And not only that, it can foster some community identity and spirit. It's also a great crime prevention school. A tool, more eyes on the street means less people out there doing things that they shouldn't be. And also the community garden is, you don't need to know how to communicate through language if you're out there gardening. You could just be out there shoveling right next to someone who didn't even speak your language. It's a way to break barriers and get around people that you normally would not get around, which is something that I've always strived to do. I love diverse people and I love diverse experiences. The second main thing that I think will really go great for not only the community, but in particular the youth, is that a lot of people don't know how to garden. I don't know how to garden. I've never did, you know, planted a garden myself. I've seen a lot of people do it and I ate in the food and the food is amazing. But this is an opportunity for me as well to go out and see what it's all about. Also, I mean, the kids nowadays, you know, going out there and working in the garden, it's going to be great for them if they don't already live out in the rural community and do some type of farming work or something. It builds character, I'll tell you that much. Nothing like going out there with a shovel and digging some dirt in the trench. Also, community gardens, it's a unique opportunity to teach youth about a lot of nature things. Because it's hard to get them out into nature sometimes. And so when you have something right in your backyard, it makes it a little easier to get them out there. And one of the last things is, just for the youth, once, if we start healthy habits when they're young, they'll continue on as they get old. So the younger we start these kids going into the garden and volunteering, the further it's going to impact them in their lives as they go on. The longer they live, the more prosperous they are, the happier they are. And there's a lot of studies and research that goes towards that, that I can point you towards if you are interested. And the last thing is just promoting those healthy habits. Being healthy and eating healthy food makes you feel better and makes you a lot nicer to people. As well as childhood and adult obesity are at record highs. It's like deleting killers, basically, in the medical field, all the obesity-related diseases. And there's a lot of co-morbidities in that. And by that I mean, these people are getting multiple, multiple of these diseases, not just one or two, they're getting three or four all at a time. And so when you treat your food like it's your medicine, it's going to help heal you in different ways. And the last couple of things I mentioned, there's a lot of information on that, but I feel like you guys could do research for yourselves. But, I didn't realize how long it was going to be. The take home message is that we've done a lot of research on the community garden. There's a lot of people that are showing support, not only at the level of volunteers in terms of the youth, but also the older senior community who want to be out there and garden for help, but also to help cut their bottom line. And so that's something that I really see as a win-win situation. Not just for the community, but also for the people that decide to get around the project and can see and feel the impact that they're actually making. Any questions?
Oh, good presentation, thank you very much.
I appreciate your enthusiasm, good job.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
I just have to say something too.
Uh-oh.
No, working with this young man has really made me feel younger. He's got so much energy and so much optimism and so much vision and I really appreciate you. Thank you for all your help.
Thank you.
Good job.
Yeah, good job, thank you very much. Okay, Project Love Annual Report.
How's everybody tonight?
Good, how are you?
Mayor and councilmember, it's a pleasure to be here and it's a pleasure to follow, you know, such passion. And that certainly makes our community what it is, is having people that are passionate about other people and that's all about other people. And I'm sure that everybody serves here is because we have servant service and that's why we do what we do. And I just thank you for doing what you do. And I thank you for last year. I think we had a very successful year and the city provided twenty-five hundred dollars to provide food for the community. With that money, we stretched it out through the whole year. We took the Project Love trailer out forty-five times and fed approximately twenty-eight hundred meals with, which constituted about a quarter of the budget for Project Love. And it's not exciting that we have hungry people out there and that we have to feed them, but they're there and it's a great service that we can provide and that you've helped do this for the city of Galt. And it's, I know I have the same passion, I kind of like that young man here, that it's, I see a lot more. I see people and I see their needs and I just want to help them. And I'm sorry, my wife's not here and she's pretty much a driving force behind it. She keeps me going. She does, makes me look good with all the paperwork and all the things that she does. And I want to give her the credit for all that. But she's out serving, raising money for cows and out in the fireworks booth taking my spot. So she couldn't be here. Just want to kind of go through the year. We have a thing called Back to School Bash and we had that last year. And it was the second time that we had done this event and it was amazing. We had probably over a thousand people that came. We fed, we provided dinner. And it was a place for people that just don't have as much as everybody else. And we made a way so kids could go to school and have everything. We set up an apartment store, we gathered clothes for months and we hung them on hangers and we divided it into age groups and we had beauticians come out and hairdressers and there was people doing nails and bouncy houses. And we brought the community together, businesses, clubs. And we just loved on a bunch of kids, you know, for that night. That's what we did, we loved on them and they left, they were happy to go to school. We gave out two-hundred-and-eighty backpacks. And I think that's just a really accomplishment that we can do all together. It's coming up again, August sixteenth. It's on a Saturday, it's from five to nine and we're going to do it over the History Makers Foundation. And it's going to be even bigger and better. And we invite, we invite surrounding communities because we feel like, you know, Harold and Thornton, they're part of our school district and those kids come to our schools, so we invite them. In fact, I think the Harold Club came over here and bought all brand-new tennis shoes and handed out brand-new tennis shoes.
Awesome.
It's just awesome to see the outpouring of our city and that's why I love this city. And I'm not going to share everything that we've done all year. You've got this to read and I hope you go over it. But there's one big thing that we, Feeding America came to us this year, just a couple of months ago. And they asked us if we would be willing to open a food pantry or food bank. And pretty much was just kind of thrown at us all at once, but it is amazing to see what is happening. In the last month, we gave over about ten thousand pounds of food out to our community. And we were able to give food out every single week to about sixty families. And that included meat and vegetables. And I'm hoping someday that these gardens right here will actually be able to gather some of that garden and distribute it into places that it's needed. So I was excited about that. But it's an honor for us to serve in this community and I just, you know, it's just not the home, we started out just helping the homeless, but now we're helping the city, you know. And I just, I'm glad to be a part of the city and I thank you very much for supporting us.
Thank you for the work you do too.
Okay, you have any questions or?
We just appreciate you.
Oh, thank you.
That backpack thing was huge. I went by there because I live close by and it was, you had a lot of stuff going on that day. That was a big event. And I know there were a lot of happy children.
Yeah, come out, invite you guys to come out and be a part, you know. Have the city of Galt have a boost out there, you know, and whatever you have to do to support back in, you know, or just come out there and just have a good time. All right?
Thank you. Okay, now we're at the specific plan. That's to you, Tony.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and good evening, everybody. This is more a technical presentation. And the reason why I'm bringing it to you tonight was twofold. One, because it's just informational. It's something that I brought for the Planning Commission at their meeting last month and it was decided to bring it to you as well, just to update you on what specific plans are and aren't. And also because we have a new specific plan application that's going through the process. And I'll talk about that a little bit at the end of the presentation and also during our strategic plan updates as well. So real briefly, I'm not going to go through everything on these slides, but a specific plan is a planning tool that generally is used to implement the city's general plan. And it's a link between the general plan and a defined project area. And similar to a general plan and a zoning ordinance, it's approved by the city council with a planning commission recommendation beforehand. A little bit more specifically, specific plans can actually encompass just a defined project area as small as one parcel or an acre, or as large as several hundred acres, such as our northeast specific plan area. What the specific plan does is it sets forth policies and/or design guidelines and/or standards, and usually all three, to allow the developer and the planners and the city to bring forward a project that has a unique design all itself. The nice thing about specific plans too is that once the environmental document is done for them, the future development within the specific plan area can piggyback on that, saving everybody a little bit of time and effort. The one important thing to notice though about specific plans, what makes them unique compared to the other types of planning applications, I'll discuss in a minute, is that they define the major components of the infrastructure necessary for the planned land uses and also the financing for that. So that's the key difference between specific plans and this next set of planning applications. So what isn't a specific plan? Well, a specific plan isn't a general plan. The general plan, which is mandated by the state for every jurisdiction in the state, is a set of goals and policies that guides the long-range development and build-out of the entire city. And it's adopted by resolution, whereas a specific plan is a general plan implementation tool. Again, it's an optional document and you can either approve it through a resolution or an ordinance depending on really how detailed it is and how many felt standards are attached. They're also not community or area plans, but they're pretty close. A community or an area plan is a component of a general plan. And what it really is, is a, an area within the city that requires basically its own set of unique standards above and beyond the general land use element policies. Galt, being a relatively small city, doesn't have any, but for instance, the city that I just left was about sixty square miles, dated back to the eighteen-fifties, and had a lot of topography and whatnot, something we don't have a whole lot here, of course, but it had unique communities that really needed to have their own set of policies and standards. But again, those are general plan policies, whereas a specific plan, even though it also is for a specific area of the community, is again, not the general plan itself, it's an implementation tool of it. It's also not the zoning ordinance. The zoning ordinance, again, establishes all of the development standards for every property in the city, and then of course it's broken down into zones, and for instance, our commercial zones, every property within the commercial zone has to abide by the development standards equally, and is approved always by ordinance, where again, the specific plan looks again at its specific project area, and it also, again, deals with the infrastructure needs, whereas the zoning ordinance doesn't get into that. Now, this is one I actually added recently, the Planning Commission didn't get this particular one, based on an inquiry Councilmember Payne had adjacent, and that was about form-based codes, and I'll talk about this a little bit more, too, when we get into the downtown specific plan area. But a form-based code is a type of a development code or zoning ordinance, but whereas we have a standard zoning ordinance here, where again, all of your commercial zones have the same standards, form-based codes are very similar to specific plans in that they look at a particular area, say our downtown area, because what they are designed to do, like a specific plan, is to guide the development of that area, and the planners and the community have a good idea as to what specifically will be developed out there, as opposed to just, you know, general commercial areas may have, you know, meet the setbacks in parking, but you don't really get the sense necessarily what that's gonna look like over time, whereas with a form-based code and the specific plan, you can get more detail with the actual development patterns. And the form-based code is more or less the same as the combining zone, it's just that we call the omnibus actual land use map, or the zoning map, excuse me, we call the form-based code area an overlay zone for instance. So they're more or less one and the same. And again, the specific plan is similar, but again, gets into the infrastructure and is not necessarily ordained like a development code, zoning code, or the overlay zone would be. And finally, specific plans are not variances. Variances, to be honest, are red flags to every planner because they are extremely hard to come by. Variances can only be approved if there is a unique hardship, and it cannot be self-imposed. So for instance, somebody who has a flat seventy-five-hundred-square-foot lodge, just like their neighbors, you know, seventy-by-by-a-hundred, there's nothing unique about their property, really, and so just because they don't want to apply by the setback standards doesn't grant them the right to have a variance. A specific plan, on the other hand, is not, does not have to meet those unique requirements. What a specific plan, again, is meant to do, is to deviate from the development standards of, you know, for the rest of the zone and the rest of the general plan, because again, the planners want a unique development for that area, so we use the specific plan to get there, to basically get there. Now, the city of Galt is kind of unique in that our general plan requires that any property that is being annexed into the city has a specific plan proposal with it, which is why we've got the new specific plan in the end, because if the city builds out, we're gonna be seeing more and more requests for annexations, which means more and more specific plan applications as well. Currently, we have two rather old specific plans in the city. We have the first one here, which is our northeast area specific plan, you can see it was done back in eighty-seven and revised in ninety-eight, and it's basically the large area south of Twin Cities and east of the ninety-nine, out to the city limits right now. And again, what this develops, what the specific plan did, and as you can see driving through the area, is created a unique place, specific place, basically, where we've got Corollion, for instance, with its wide and rich parkways, when this was planned for, we looked at the infrastructure needs and how it would be financed, has a conservation element to it, for instance, the Dead Man's Gulch, so it's preserved and whatnot. So it's created a really unique, you know, specific place out in that area. Our other area is, specific plan area is our downtown area, and that was done back in ninety-five, and again, if you walk down the area, which is nice, 'cause you can actually walk down, encourage you to do so, it's not your standard commercial or residentially-zoned properties. It has its unique sense of place, again, where you've got buildings that are set up to the sidewalk, you've got parking in the back, you have unique streetscape, again. Now, the reason why I talked about the overlay zone earlier, so, is because this particular specific plan is unique in that it has a sunset, most of them don't, but this one does, and it's actually set. So at this point, we are, as you are well aware, starting our new development or zoning ordinance update, and one of the things we're going to be looking at is to, first of all, just look and see if the standards for the downtown area need to be freshened up a little bit, added to, tweaked a little bit, not a wholesale redo, but just kind of updated. But the other thing we're going to look at is to, you know, see if really we shouldn't turn that into its own unique zoning ordinance with its own unique form-based code. It's already almost there, and we know what the infrastructure needs are, which is really the only difference right now between a specific plan and the turning it into an actual ordinance out there and its own unique zone. So we'll be looking at that, and that'll be part of the process that we go through. So you'll have more opportunity to comment on that as you get through the process. And finally, we have our new Liberty Ranch specific plan, or ECU, as it's also known. This is the area that is bound by Cherokee and Marengo, and then Twin Cities on the north and the railroad to the south, just east of the northeast area specific plan. Approximately five hundred acres, three hundred and fifty of those acres are owned by SunCal, and that's the actual Liberty Ranch portion. There are several properties, plus the high school out there, that right now would be within, hopefully, that specific plan area, so we're analyzing it all as one project. We're just now kicking off the environmental review process on that, and I'll stop my comments on it for now, because it'll pick up again as we get into the strategic plan portion of our meeting tonight. But again, this is just now starting, it will require a lot of public involvement, a lot of your involvement, so hopefully I filled your heads a little bit with just what specific plans are, but also to give you a heads-up that this is gonna be a great opportunity for you and the community as a whole to be involved in the specific plan process. And that concludes my presentation, if you have other questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Questions? That was a very good presentation, thank you very much. Okay, Liz, come on back, we need the public comment.
Under Government Code, Section 5495, 4.3, "Members of the public may address the council on non-agenda items. Speakers may address council on any agenda item during consideration of the item. Speakers shall restrict their comments to issues that are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council, and limit comments to a maximum of three minutes. Please fill out a speaker sheet located on the table inside the entrances to the council chambers, and forward the completed speaker sheet to the city clerk." And I have no speaker sheet.
Okay, thank you very much. Now, we've moved your report up, so you're on again.
Me again. Okay, as I do every year, I'm bringing forward a request for consideration to cancel or move the city council meeting of August fifth, in order for the city council and the staff to attend National Night Out. If council wishes to cancel the meeting, the only conflict would be the date of the Lighting and Landscape District public hearings, which council will be setting tonight. This item is coming up on the agenda, and the date can be moved to the second meeting in August. If council does not wish to cancel the meeting, we can move the meeting to Monday, August fourth, or Wednesday, August sixth. Cable is available on those dates, and the council chambers is also available.
Okay, council, honey.
I would only be wondering if we have any, other than what we have here, any other issues that are gonna need to be decided upon before those dates.
I believe that LNL was the only pressing item that was up there.
There's always items for the agenda, I don't know that there's anything else that, you know, absolutely needs to go that evening. We have negotiations with the unions that is always an issue. So certainly, if council desires to cancel it, we'd make accommodations, and we'd be fine moving it to the second meeting in August. If you'd like to give direction to move it and, you know, keep the meeting short, certainly we can do that as well, so we're certainly able to, I guess, the bottom line is, there's nothing on that date that couldn't be moved, but if the council wanted to keep the meeting and move it to another date, we certainly have items that we could have available and ready for the council's consideration that evening.
I would just assume still have a meeting, because then that would only mean the second meeting would probably be a lot of stuff, and twice a month is what we do, so Monday or Wednesday is fine with me, what about you guys?
And that's a good point, 'cause we don't wanna stack enough, and then us have to have a three-hour meeting just to handle the stuff that we should've handled, and then we get it at the month to cancel it. So either one of those days is good for me, Monday or Wednesday.
For Monday, Wednesday, I get time tied up with scouts.
Okay, well then, Barbara, are you okay with Monday? Okay, how about staff? Monday, okay?
We believe Monday's fine.
Okay, so then we'll change it to Monday, August fourth? Okay, and so we'll change your date to Monday, August fourth, here on the consent calendar.
You're on it.
Okay?
So we'll just amend that, we don't need to pull it off.
Yeah, we don't, we'll just put August fourth on there. Okay, so we're at the consent, information consent calendar, Liz, would you please read the four items?
Okay, the first one, approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of June seventeenth, two thousand and fourteen. Number two, approval of the city of vote warrants. Number three, a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a memorandum of understanding with Sacramento County and its contractors for the management and control of responses to incidents involving the release of hazardous materials. And number four, lighting and landscape districts' engineers' reports and intention to levy and collect assessments for fiscal year two thousand and fourteen, fifteen, and set public hearings.
Do I have a motion to approve, please?
Second.
Call for the vote, please, Liz.
Point of order.
Point of order.
Are we also going to amend it to show August fourth for the public comment?
Yes, as amended.
Okay.
To August fourth.
Okay. Call for the vote, please.
Thank you.
Vice President.
Aye.
Councilwoman Payne?
Aye.
Councilwoman Cruz?
Aye.
Mayor Powers?
Aye.
Okay, so now we're at the strategic plan, that would be me, but I'll see who's being lit up tonight. So first of all, as the city of Galt, the enhance and maintain infrastructure and facilities, and this is where Councilmember Barbara Payne, police chief, public works director, special project administrator, community development director with input from the Parks and Recreation Committee, Commission, I'm sorry, and Galt Youth Baseball will develop and present to the city council for action, a plan to improve Harvey Park and the livability of the surrounding area, including park facilities, code enforcement, crime prevention, and the cost. Oh, that was a mouthful, who's gonna take that one?
A lot of people on that list.
There is, a lot of workers.
Well, we need to take part of it, and then if any of the other people up here wanna take a shot at it, I know we talked about the community garden, that's a big part of it, and I think the other big news is we received notification, I think just today, that we received the grant for Harvey Park, actually more than what we applied for, one-hundred-and-eighty-five-thousand dollars. That we got official notification, so we'll be doing a press release, and then what we plan on doing is Armando and Bill and staff will be taking this back to Galt Youth Baseball, back to the Parks and Rec Commission for some prioritization, you know, there was a big, long list of things we wanted to do out there, so we're gonna ask them to come up with their list of priorities, then we'll bring that to the council, and you guys can make the final determination of where you wanna spend that money in Harvey Park, and then we'll be ready to start.
Did we already halfway do that, or no?
We got our preliminary list, we got some cost estimates, Bill got some cost estimates, we have a list of potential projects, what we didn't do is prioritize it.
Oh.
'Cause we didn't know how much money we were gonna get, and so we said, well, let's wait and figure out, and now we know we have one-hundred-and-eighty-five, so we can start to put those projects in, so how much is one-hundred-and-eighty-five gonna buy us? Which projects can we do, so that's the next step. So we'll bring that back to you, so that's exciting.
Anyone else?
I would just add that we have been talking to different people as far as helping provide the materials for the community garden, until we actually knew that we got the grant and have had the meeting as far as priorities, haven't felt comfortable in asking people to pledge until we know we're gonna do it. So with this information, then we will try to get more donations. We figure that each little plot, the lumber alone would probably cost about twenty-two dollars, but again, we're hoping that we can get a lot donated. We should have more of a side chick available for the council to consider.
Well, I think each and every one of you ought to be commended for that, I'm so, I'm not surprised, but I'm very hopeful and happy at how fast it's coming along, and this is what teamwork is all about, and I think you guys are doing a great job. Okay, on to enhance economic development. By July tenth, the community development director will conduct an ECU annexation and specific plan project scoping meeting with the applicant and the community.
Thank you, and again, so picking up where I left off on the last presentation, I'm happy to report that after several delays, I'm not sure it's happening here, but on the screen, but anyway, on July tenth, we will be holding the scoping meeting. As I mentioned before, we have the ECU project, specific plan project in, and we've been waiting for a, an actual detailed enough project description that we can move forward with starting the environmental impact report, and so we do have that, the notice of preparation went out on June twenty-fifth, and the thirty-day comment period ends on July twenty-fifth. During that process, we will be combining the Planning Commission meeting, which is regularly scheduled here in the chambers at six-thirty on July tenth, with the scoping meeting. In fact, it'll primarily be the scoping meeting, we only have one other small item on that. And what we'll do is we'll open the doors at six o'clock, and anybody who wants to come in and go around, look at the exhibits first, can do so, and then we'll convene the meeting at six-thirty, and basically just take comments from the public as to what they would like to see in the environmental impact report. Keeping in mind that this strictly is just obtaining the list for the environmental impact report, it's not to discuss the merits of the project or whatnot, that way down the line, like I said, we're just at the beginning of the process, but again, it's exciting that we're actually finally able to kick it off and see the progress at this point.
Great, thank you very much. Now, to improve financial stability, the special projects administrator will evaluate the feasibility of acceptance of EBT cards at the Galt market and make a recommendation to the city council for action.
Good evening. Armando's busy getting ready for our Independence Day celebration, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna fill in for him on this one, and the good news is that we did receive approval to start accepting EBT cards. There's a law process that we still have to go through, but, you know, we at least got the initial okay, and so now what we're gonna be doing is figuring out the best way to administer the program, there's a third-party administrator that provides services to accept the cards and cut the checks to the vendors and so forth, so we're meeting with them. There's a cost involved in doing it, so we're looking at ways that we can defer or have some of the produce vendors pay a percentage in order to have that privilege, and so we're looking at some different models right now, some options. We think we'll be back to the council probably in August with some recommendations on what that might look like, so.
Okay.
I just wanna say how happy I am to see that we are making this happen. It was something that I was surprised that in the past, that people that had, I'm just gonna call them food stamps, were not able to use them at our Galt market, our Galt flea market, because we have so much produce, and that's, to me, what some of the, well, all, everybody, but especially the low-income people need to be able to afford. So I'm really excited that we're moving along those lines, and maybe we can provide healthy food for everybody.
My understanding is we're the only, only the second flea market in the state that's gotten approval to have an EBT program.
That's great.
We're special. We are special.
That's great.
Okay, since we don't have the overhead, attract, develop, and retrain quality employees, I don't know which one is highlighted.
There weren't any one highlighted, not one this time.
Okay.
Or the other one, so I think that's pretty much the end of the presentation.
All righty, thank you very much, thanks, everybody. Thanks, everybody. Okay, so now we're going to, we have the public works department and the subject is agreements for disposal of household hazardous waste with the cities of Elk Grove and Sacramento. And that's to you, Mr. Winkler.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and council members. This next item requests authorization for the city manager to execute agreements with the cities of Elk Grove and Sacramento respectively, setting terms and conditions for golf residents to use each city's household hazardous waste facilities. Historically, golf residents have been allowed to utilize the city of Sacramento facility without a formalized agreement and then they would subsequently build the city of Golf for a proportionate share of usage of the facility, typically on a per-vehicle basis, as we are continuing to propose. However, they have recently asked all of the communities in the region that are using that facility to enter into very similar agreements, setting terms and conditions and indemnification requirements and agreements for payment, et cetera, as well as some of the rules for use of the facility. So, we are proposing that both agreements be approved tonight. Recently, the city of Golf, excuse me, recently, the city of Gulf Grove opened a brand-new facility and that facility, they've invited golf residents, subject to an agreement such as this, to utilize their facility. We are fully in agreement with the city of Sacramento at staff level on the terms for approval, however, and we recommend that you approve that tonight if you're so inclined. We are, however, still working with city of Gulf Grove on some legal indemnification language. We're not in necessarily full agreement. We are recommending that you authorize the city manager, subject to concurrence by the city attorney, to award this if we can arrive at mutually acceptable language, so that would avoid bringing it back to you if we are successful. And that we've worked toward that end and maybe Mr. Rudolph would like to add a few comments as to the concerns within that meeting.
I did want to just make a few comments about that because normally when we do agreements with other public agencies, we don't run into any issues with things like indemnification. It's usually pretty simple and the approach is normally that if we do something, we take an act and we cause some damage to somebody, that we pick up the responsibility. And if they do something and they cause harm, then it's their responsibility. And the good news about that arrangement is that we have insurance for our acts. It's typical to an auto accident where if you're driving and you caused the accident, then you're responsible and your insurance company picks up, picks up the bill. And the issue that has developed with Elk Grove is they have inserted a provision that if one of our residents goes up to use the Elk Grove facility and some, something they do causes harm, say, let's say they take up a, you know, a bucket of some chemical that they're getting rid of and on the way to their, from their car to the facility, they drop it and it splashes on some other person and that person sues the city of Elk Grove. What the city of Elk Grove has said is, well, we want you to be responsible, city of Golf, for any liability that comes out of that situation. The problem with that is, first of all, it's not our act, it's not something that we control, but also we can't get any insurance for that kind of situation. It's not our facility, it's not our employees, our people that are doing work for us. So, if we accepted that kind of responsibility, we'd have to pay for that responsibility out of the general fund. And the city of Elk Grove carries insurance for the operation of this facility. My position is they've got coverage for it, but we couldn't get it. And I talked to their city attorney today and suggested some different options that they, they explore. The initial response really wasn't too favorable, but they said that they would continue to work with us to try to resolve this particular issue. So, I just wanted to give the council a little bit of a better idea what the issue was that we were trying to resolve. But, we are asking that the council move ahead and approve the agreements this evening with the, and we will just be optimistic that we can resolve this one issue and have both of these facilities open to use by our residents.
So, we're going to approve the Sacramento one or we're going to, we can't approve the Elk Grove?
So, basically, what we're recommending is that you approve both of them. The Sacramento one is fine and ready to go. With the Elk Grove one, it would be a council approval, subject to being able to resolve this indemnification issue at staff level. If we get it resolved, we don't have to come back to the city council. The manager can sign it, I can approve it to a forum and we'd be, we'd be done.
And you'll surprise us if what's getting done now.
Yes, they will.
As you always do.
So, we don't have to leave out Elk Grove on this, then, at this time?
No, we just wanted to make you aware that there was this one lingering issue that we're trying to work out.
Why would we, why would we feel comfortable with that kind of a possible liability hanging over our heads? What would our, what is our alternative if we don't approve this?
Well, if you don't approve the agreement with Elk Grove, then our residents would continue to use the Sacramento facility as they have done before the Elk Grove facility was available. And as it relates to the Elk Grove agreement, is that if, if we cannot work out this particular issue where we don't have this liability that we can insure against, then we would not sign that agreement with Elk Grove.
So, are you asking us to go ahead and approve both of them or can we just approve the one with the city of Sacramento tonight?
So, the, so the recommendation is to approve both and authorize the manager to sign both agreements, knowing that if we, if we don't work out this indemnification issue with Elk Grove, we are not going to sign the agreement.
Okay.
If we do work it out, then we will sign it and either way, we'll apprise the council. The other approach is if you're not comfortable with that, as you could approve the Sacramento agreement tonight, we could continue to work with Elk Grove and if we do get it resolved, we would bring that agreement back to you for your approval. So, those are, those are the options that are available.
So, if we agree to, to approve this, subject to our city manager working out this indemnity part of it and he isn't able to, then automatically we will not approve the Galt.
And we wouldn't sign it, we wouldn't be able to use the facility in Elk Grove, but I wanted to make you aware of what the issue was so that if we send an email to the council later on and say we couldn't work it out, you'd have an appreciation as to what the issue was.
Well, I believe and trust in our city manager to be the right thing. I don't think he's going to sign it knowing that there might be a liability, so I just wanted to make sure that we weren't committing to something and I wanted the public to know that we weren't committing to something that was going to cause us a liability.
Well, and our attorney will be looking it over too, so.
Yeah.
I do have a question though. At our youth retreat, youth community retreat at Cal Waste yesterday, it came up that there's no place in Golf for people to dispose of needles, I've learned. And one of the things that came up was, it's not easy to get rid of them. They tend to throw them in the garbage, which is dangerous to the handlers there at Cal Waste. Is it true in fact that there is no way to get rid of needles and do you have any way of changing that?
I'm not prepared to give you a definitive answer, but based on my experience, typically, there's not a one formal location, but typically you'll check with pharmacies or your doctors or, or regional hospital facilities will often accept those. If you call it advanced, they give instructions as to how they will receive them and what hours they're open. But, many of the pharmacies will accept sharps and then work as a, with a cooperative group to dispose of those.
They charge, that's why I was told, they do charge.
I would have to look into that further to give you a more appropriate answer as to that. My experience with San Joaquin County was that there were larger pharmacy chains that would take them for free. I haven't researched the local pharmacies.
And I believe it's part of the hazardous waste, you can take them to a hazardous waste disposal site?
Yes, if they use an HHW, they will accept the sharps.
Yeah, HHW is right.
And they have proper packaging for that, but again, that might take a trip to either Elk Grove or Sacramento, depending on the agreements that are executed.
And the police department threw our drug take-back. Also, we're taking needles at the time and we had one of those approximately a month and a half ago.
Good to know. Thank you. Okay, Liz, do you mind reading the act, the recommended action, please?
Okay, adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute agreements with the city of Elk Grove and the city of Sacramento respectively, for the city of golf residents to utilize each city's household hazardous waste collection facility for disposal of household hazardous waste items.
Move the item.
Second.
Call for the vote, please, Liz.
Vice Mayor Singleton?
Aye.
Councilwoman Payne?
Aye.
Councilwoman Cruz?
Aye.
Councilwoman Powers?
Aye.
Unanimous, four zero. And if I could go back to the consent calendar vote, I believe I said it passed unanimously five zero.
Yes.
It did pass unanimously four zero.
I'll look it down like that.
Thank you. Okay, now we're going to adjourn the Gulf City Council and convene to the Gulf Successor Agency. Roll call, please, Liz.
Board members, Singleton?
Here.
Payne?
Here.
Campion?
Cruz?
Present.
Powers?
Here.
We have no public comment, correct?
No public comment. Okay, the information consent calendar, the minutes of the May 6th, 2014, and June 3rd, 2014, meetings and the successor agency warrants. Do I have a motion?
Submove.
Second.
Call for the vote.
Board members, Singleton?
Aye.
Payne?
Aye.
Cruz?
Aye.
Powers?
Aye.
I don't get employees for fair.
Oh, I'm sorry. I forget my stage. I know, sorry. Adjourn the Gulf Successor Agency and reconvene to the Gulf City Council. Comments by staff. We'll start over here on the left. Anybody? Anybody down there? Chief?
I do.
You're getting ready to say something?
At last meeting, there was a citizen express, some concerned regarding left-hand turn out of the really shopping center with Jack in the Box. The following day, we went out and took a look at it. There is a problem. We have, in fact, contacted traffic engineer Gwen Owen and she has submitted something to Caltrans as far as cat tracking, where you see the dotted lines going out, showing in fact that it is two left-hand turn lanes. Signs are posted, there's arrows on the ground saying right-hand turn only. We went out and did an advisement and we're still doing it today as far as telling people they can't make a left-hand turn. We're going to try to put something in the paper next week advising people and if they're successful as far as that cat tracking, and I don't know why they call it that, but that's the term she used, we'll in fact start enforcing that as far as left-hand turn. I was there roughly about 5:00 tonight watching it again. It seems to be early in the morning, later on in the afternoon, when in fact the biggest problem we have with people going left-hand. So, if you use that shopping center, I would advise you to make sure that you look and see the signs that say, "No left turn, right turn only."
Thank you. Jason? Steve? Okay, we'll start down here with Barbara.
I just want to congratulate the senior club for a very successful fundraiser and thank the vice mayor for providing the music for the fashion show.
Oh, I love that.
Also, the youth community did have their retreat at Cal Waste yesterday, the full-day event with our city manager coming and speaking to them. And we look forward to a new year with new people, well, almost new people, humble people.
I do want to say that I was sorry I missed the tea. I had a family reunion that had been planned a year in advance, so, and I was in charge, so it was very hard to come. But, it is a really fun thing and I'm sorry I missed it. Vice Mayor?
I attended. It was really fun. It was very well-attended. Ms. Payne had some ladies there showing off, I don't know if you guys read the article, but showing some styles through the years and it was just great. I was looking at those gals and wondering, why can't we go back to those days when they showed that, that respect and that class? Looked good stuff.
You were, you were the dress of the whole night.
Well, I just, I just thought it was very well. And the gals that she had there just did a great job. They looked real good and to the seniors, Sharon and the rest, they're just always great company to come and talk to them. So, I had a great time and thank you very much. That's it.
Council member?
You know, you did me a very scary thought. Mike and address?
Yeah.
No. I agree.
You can have it, public, thank you.
The senior team was a lot of fun. I met a young lady, actually, yes, a young lady there who was from the Sacramento area at the table I was assigned to and she just could do nothing but rave about how our town was so neat and tidy and how friendly everybody was. I was like, wow, thanks. We're doing it right.
Yeah.
Other than that, have a very happy and wonderful Fourth of July. Fleas hydrate, it's triple-digit numbers all the way through the holiday, from what I understand.
Right, okay, well, I guess I get to talk about the Fourth of July. Independence Day celebration. It's an all-day event for the citizens of Golf. It's put on by the city council and the city of Golf and it's something that we're very proud of. I think we're in our fourth year now and each year gets bigger and better. We're going to start off this year at 8:00 with a 5K run in memory of Officer Kevin Ton and we'll see the chief out there in his shorts again this year, right? And after that, we'll have a parade that starts at 9:30, it goes down 8th Street, starts at the high school, goes down 8th Street to 4th Street, then up C Street and, you know, this parade is really something else. It's a great parade. Bring your kids out, it's a lot of fun. And all day long, we'll be having horseshoe tournaments, an Old Time County Fair, people can go to the pool to watch the fireworks later on in the evening, we have basketball, baseball tournament and then, starting at 5:30, I hope I'm remembering everything. If I'm not, somebody chime in. At 5:30, Veterans Field will open up and we will have the band from 5:30 to 9:30. Then at 9:30, we'll culminate with fireworks, so I hope that everybody's going to be out there. It's a great day and a lot of fun and it's a great way to get out and meet your neighbors and have fun with the city and so we thank the city again for sponsoring this and it's just going to be a really great day.